Got your email?
Okay, perfect.
Thanks. Uh, yes, I did.
You know what I mean? We don't really work, okay? I know you have. And I appreciate that, because what he did.
That's why I just, I, I don't know who went to who, I just.
Thank you.
At least I can see out of my right eye now.
How are you?
Scott. It's gonna be more than a second, I can tell you that.
I can't do that right now, it's been a week. I just need your love and some words.
I got you, I got you.
Didn't make it up here in time. Disco was like. Disco was like, you better get up there. I know, I was out there taking a complaint from a constituent.
I got it.
I know, it's like, time to move on. You would've been looking for me.
We'd have waited.
Do I?
We would've waited.
Yeah, and then I'm, that one on the.
Ready?
Good, good job.
The Chair will call the October 3, 2023, meeting of the City Council to order. Please ride for the pledge of, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk Lesko, can you please call the roll?
Will do. Alderman Redpath.
Here.
Alderman Gregory.
Here.
Alderman Williams.
Here.
Alderman Rockford.
Here.
Alderwoman Purchase.
Here.
Alderwoman Nottriano.
Here.
Alderman Carlson.
Here.
Alderwoman Conley. Alderman Donlin.
Here.
Alderman Hanauer.
Here.
Mayor Buscher.
Here.
Mayor Buscher, a quorum is present.
Thank you, Clerk Lesko. In the interest of civility, I pledge to promote civility by listening, being respectful of others, acknowledging that we are all striving to support and improve our community, and understanding that we each may have a different ideas for achieving that objective. At this time, the Chair would like to acknowledge that we have a guest in the audience. Uh, we have Emily Lynch with Sinclair Broadcasting, Emily Lynch and Sinclair Broadcasting providing a brief presentation of our annual summer campaign recap for SCVB, so we'll let Emily and Scott come up.
Thank you, Mayor, appreciate that. Um, as you, uh, may recall, the last few weeks, the Illinois Office of Tourism released 2022 traveler expenditure data, and it showed that in Sagamon County, we had an all-time record, $536 million in traveler expenditures in 2022. I will tell you that, looking at the early numbers in '23, looking at hotel occupancy numbers and just the overall compression of the city, uh, it looks like we'll have, once again in '23, when the numbers come out, we'll have another record. I think our, our best years are ahead of us, heading towards the 100th anniversary of Route 66 in 2026. Part of that is this digital, uh, summer marketing campaign, uh, that Sinclair Broadcasting Group, uh, has been a part of, I believe, the last two years. They have a multi-year, uh, contract with us, and so Emily Lynch is here today to tell us how we did.
Thank you, Scott, and everybody, and for your business. Um, we so appreciate it and love working with you all. Um, we target these ads in cities not our own, so that's why you don't see these, because in May through July, we target cities like Madison and Milwaukee, Wisconsin, a 25-mile radius of those cities, Cedar Rapids, Davenport, Iowa, Paducah, Kentucky, Kansas City, St. Louis, Chicago suburbs, and Indianapolis, um, to bring those folks here, um, to come visit our great city. And we target adults in those cities aged 30-plus, families, grandparents interested in history, interested in Abraham Lincoln, Route 66 enthusiasts, um, cultural history and road trip travelers. We target those, um, people in the cities to come here through OTT commercials, which you might know as non-skipable streaming commercials, when you're looking on an ad-supported Netflix or Hulu, Peacock, Paramount Plus, through video impressions, so when you're watching something online, um, in a, a story or something that's a video, those pre-rolls that are in there, display impressions when you're reading an article online. Um, you might see a banner image if you lived in one of those cities that had an interest in what we were targeting, um, Facebook and Instagram, so your social. We had tons of Facebook, um, impressions this year, more than ever before. We do targeted email sends and, um, YouTube impressions. And I have a sample of, um, if you lived in one of those areas and you were one of our targets of an ad that you might have seen there. And up next, we have, um, a video that you might have seen on Facebook if you lived in one of the targeted areas. This is on the left, an example of an email, um, that was targeted, what it looked like, and we also do a smart mailer, which means that, um, a person that lives in those cities that are interested in some of those targets, say, um, interested in Abraham Lincoln, and they've been to the Visit Springfield website, then they get sent a mailer, like a direct mail piece, in the mail once they get off the Visit Springfield website. And so thank you for your continued business. Any questions?
Thank you.
Alderman Carlson.
Question quickly. I assume on the impressions, you keep, can you, you have the ability to click back to Facebook? And if so, what, you have the click rate percentage on the display impressions at all?
Yep, we can definitely, we get those reports, we get, um, increased likes from Facebook, from when we do the different campaigns.
What is, you have the click rate, is, it's mostly probably, what, 1% or 2%, maybe 3%?
I don't have it here, but it, yes, we change different, um, aspects to it, to whether it's to get more followers or to get more clicks. And this year, we chose clicks, so we add higher clicks to the actual Visit Springfield website. But yeah, we can get you the exact numbers.
I'm just curious.
Yeah, one person's pretty standard.
Any other Aldermen or Alderwomen have questions? Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair will now entertain a motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes of the September 19, 2023 City Council meeting and approve the minutes.
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor, please say, oh, I'm sorry, any discussion on those? My apologies. All right, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. The motion carries. The Chair will now entertain a motion to withdraw item number 2023-475 from first reading. Get a motion on that.
I'm pulling.
We're on, I'm on pause.
I'm sorry, Mayor, what was that?
It's okay. I'm having fun with it.
I'd like to.
The Chair will entertain a motion to withdraw item number 2023-475 from first reading. Can I get a motion for that? It was a duplicate ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
First and a second. Uh, any discussion on that? It was just a duplicate that shouldn't have been there, so. Okay. Uh, all those in favor of withdrawing item 2023-475 from first reading, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. Okay, the motion carries. Alderman Hanauer, are you okay with me continuing, or?
Yeah, I got a, oh, for a consent agenda, are we on?
Uh, I'm getting to the pre-council reading of the first.
I'll, I'll catch it.
Okay, yeah, we're not there yet.
I've got two guys back here ready, I'm, I'm just making sure I'm not getting.
Now we're all on pause. The Chair will entertain a motion to incorporate the pre-council first reading of the remaining ordinances into the record of this council meeting.
So moved.
We have a first and we have a second, any discussion on those? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say nay. The motion carries. Now, Alderman Hanauer, the next item on the agenda is the consent agenda.
Mayor, I, I ask that we, uh, pull to debate item 2023-435, and I ask that we take, send back to committee 2023-443.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second to move 2023-435 to debate and 2023-443 back to committee. Any discussion on those two items being moved out of the consent agenda? All those in favor of putting 2023-435 to debate and 2023-443 back to committee, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. Okay, the motion carries. So now, the next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. The Chair will entertain a motion to incorporate the pre-council reading of the consent agenda into the record of this council meeting, minus items 2023-435 and 2023-443.
So moved.
We have a first and a second, any discussion on the consent agenda? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say nay. Motion carries. The Chair will now entertain a motion to place the consent agenda on final passage, minus debate item 2023-435 and committee item 2023-443.
So moved.
Second.
We have a first and a second. Um, then, any discussion on the final passage of the consent agenda from anyone? Okay, the voting will now be open. All those in favor, please vote yes, all those opposed, please vote no. And the motion carries with nine voting yes, none voting no. Agenda numbers 2023-173, 2023-201, 2023-202, 2000-23-203, 2023-322, 2023-420, 2023-421, 2023-430, 2023-431, 2023-432, and 2023-443 are tabled or remaining in committee. Any action on those? Okay. Uh, the next item on the agenda is item number, I think it'll be 2023-435, is that right, Alderman Lesko, since we moved that one?
Yes.
All right. So item number 2020.
You promoted me from City Clerk.
Oh, sorry. Clerk Lesko. It's been a day, Clerk.
Me and Jennifer just looked at each other.
It's been a day. The Buscher family buried their matriarch today that was 101, so it's been a day. Yeah. Thank you. Um, so, uh, item number 2023-435 is an ordinance approving a professional agreement with Levi Ray &amp; Schup Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $559,433.74 to provide software and network service upgrades for the Office of Public Utilities.
Mayor.
Chair will entertain a motion. Yes, sir, Alderman Hanauer.
I need to add a, uh, a floor amendment to add the accounting line 107 slash G E N E C slash V A R I slash 1605, I believe is correct. Uh, I'll leave it up to the Corporation Council if it's not to correct it.
Got that right off the top of your head, huh?
Off the top of my head.
Very good, yeah.
He's good, you know that.
You read it faster than I could write, so.
That, that's right.
Okay, so we have an amendment to item number 2023-435 to add budget line. Can you please repeat that, Alderman Hanauer?
Yeah, 107 slash G E N E C slash V A R I slash 1605.
Can I get a motion to approve the amendment?
Second.
First and a second, any discussion on the amendment? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. So now, we are going to, um, move to try to approve such amended item, 2023-435.
Move as amended.
We have a motion to approve as amended. Can I get a second?
Second.
Second, any discussion on the ordinance itself then? Okay, the voting will now be open. All those in favor, please vote yes, all those opposed, please vote no.
Probably yes.
Okay, and the motion carries, nine voting yes, none voting no. Thank you, Alderman Williams. The next item on the agenda is item number 2023-444, an ordinance approving the appointment of Valerie Yezel as Director of the Office of Planning and Economic Development for the City of Springfield.
So moved.
We have a first and a second to put item number 2023-444 on final passage, any discussion?
Does she still want it?
No, she's behind you, you can ask her. The voting will now be open. All those in, oh, sorry, Alderman Gregory, I didn't see your name up there.
That's all right. Um, thank you. Uh, Director Yezel, or soon to be Director Yezel? You know I gotta ask you some questions. I just, I just really, uh, you know, I've, I've worked with you before and, and I look forward to working with you, but I, I just have to ask, um, do you have any, um, initiatives, um, um, you know, on the brain, um, for the inner-city and, and east side to, to really attack, um, longstanding disparities in, um, income and, and housing disparities, um?
I'm so glad you asked that question.
Thank you.
Um, I actually had a plan the previous, uh, previous time I was with you, and, um, I went looking for that plan when I got back into the office, and luckily, they still had it, and so I have it, and we have been meeting with a couple of developers. Um, we have just, uh, spoke yesterday with Ida that can help us with some development and revitalization, there's an actual revitalization plan. Uh, I've spoken with, uh, Jackie Newman, and we're gonna work together on several of these initiatives. And, um, a, a couple of the other things that, um, I'm trying to pull together is the land bank. Um, we established the land bank here in the city a year and a half ago or something like that, and it really hasn't gotten off the ground. So that's one thing that we can, uh, address, several of the lots, um, that are vacant over there, and what we can do, we know we have lots of, lots of, uh, uh, narrow lots of record over there, so we know we've got to address a lot of the zoning issues. So, yeah, I've got a lot.
All right, all right, all right.
Does, does that answer your question?
It does, I thank you, um, as I said, I've worked with you before, and, you know, uh, uh, in, in agreement, disagreement, um, I, I know I can, uh, definitely, definitely, uh, push, push things for the east side, so.
Absolutely, and you know I always respond, I'm, I'm gonna respond.
Absolutely, I appreciate you, thank you.
Yes.
Alderman Williams.
Yes, uh, and, and thank you for that answer and information, I appreciate it. Um, the Commission, the Economic Development Commission, are, are they back up and running?
Yes. As a matter of fact, unfortunately, we were to have a meeting tomorrow, but they didn't have a quorum, we couldn't have a quorum, so it did here. It will be canceled, and we will have it again next month, though.
I appreciate you for getting that started.
Yes.
Any other discussion on the ordinance? Okay, voting will now be open, all those in favor, please vote yes, all those opposed, please vote no.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Nine voting yes, none voting no. Welcome back, Director Yezel. The next item on the agenda is item number 2023-445, an ordinance approving the appointment of Eric Ketchum as Deputy City Treasurer. The Chair will entertain a motion to place agenda number 2023-445 on final passage.
So moved.
We have a first and a second, any discussion? I think Mr. Ketchum is here, so we should at least make him introduce himself, don't y'all think? Oh, no, you didn't come on.
Oh, come on down.
I originally hired him, so I can do this.
You're the next contestant.
Moving up to the big chair.
We'll let you state your name and record and introduce yourself to the council.
Um, I, I just have a paper, so I remember who I am. My name is Eric Ketchum, as Mr. Mayor Buscher, excuse me.
It's okay.
She said she was the one that hired me back when she was the treasurer. Um, I've been serving in the treasurer's office since June 27th of last year as the office manager. In the interim, without having a deputy treasurer, I've been kind of playing a dual role. But just to give you a background on myself, I'm born and raised in Springfield, Illinois, went to Blessed Sacrament School, Sacred Heart Griffin, and I got my, uh, bachelor's degree in business with a finance concentration from the University of Illinois Springfield. Prior to working for the city, I lived in Iowa City briefly, I worked at GEICO there, I moved back to the city and I, I worked at, uh, Heartland Credit Union here in town, various roles there. And then, like I said, for the past year and four months or so, I've been in the treasurer's office, which has deepened my understanding of municipal, uh, municipal finance, and, um, I'm very excited for the, uh, opportunity of the deputy treasurer role, and I'm honored that I was even considered. So that's it about me, I'm just eager to move into this new role and hopefully not have to be up here a whole lot.
Well, I know I can say I think you'll do a fabulous job, but any comments or discussion for soon-to-be Deputy Treasurer Ketchum? Okay, then the voting will now be open. All those in favor, please vote yes, all those opposed, please vote no. Her father's not voting for you.
There we go.
Congratulations.
With nine voting yes, none voting no.
Congratulations.
The next item on the agenda is item number 2023-451, an ordinance authorizing a two-month extension of RFP VM 18-13 with Motor Parts and Equipment Corporation, DBA NAPA Auto Parts for turnkey parts store operation for an amount not to exceed $350,000 from August 1st, 2023 through September 30th, 2023, for the Office of Budget and Management. The Chair will entertain a motion to place agenda number 2023-451 on final passage.
So moved.
We have a first, can we get a second?
Second.
We have a second, any discussion? Alderman Rockford.
Yes, um, I had a question, uh, down here, it, it says, uh, exceed amount of $350,000, bring the total RFP authorization to. To $8,600,000. Wasn't it just at five, five million?
The NAPA contract?
The NAPA contract?
Oh, the NAPA contract, can you speak in your microphone too?
Tony's speaking to us from.
The NAPA contract that was tabled, um, that was for the, for the next year, and that's the one that had, sorry, I, um, that was the one that had the, uh, O'Reilly also as the RFP, is that?
Well, it, 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 I don't have it in front of me, but I know it was, it was five million something, and then it, it jumps up to $8,600,000. Um, well, it's, it's still, I believe it's still tabled, isn't it?
Yes, yes, it is. Um, it's, uh, 2023-451.
Well, I, I'm looking at 2023-322.
322.
Tabled or remaining in committee.
The Budget Director can correct me, but that would be the new ordinance, so this would be tacking on to the old ordinance, which that old amount would be that amount. Would that be right, Budget Director Metzger?
Um, yes, that would be just for August and September for the new one.
But tacked on to the old contract where the five million was the new contract?
Okay.
Two separate contracts.
Gotcha. It just threw me off the eight, eight million, six hundred thousand, and it was five million, eight hundred fifty thousand, so. Okay, thank you.
Mayor.
Uh, Alderman Hanauer.
Thank you. Um, last week, we found out that by doing this, we're losing, it's costing us, again, eighteen thousand more a month by not, not going with the original, uh, the one that's, one that's on, is, is being held in committee. And I question whether we should go forward with this or bring that other one out and, and do that. I know you're talking about looking at, at the NAPA contract and looking at the garage operations and everything, but we, it's got termination clauses in it, and it seems if we can save eighteen thousand a month, we should, we should try to do that, that's the right thing to do. And, uh, I mean, I'd make a motion that we pull the other one out and, and, and do that before we use, we go here. I mean.
I'm fine, this is great discussion for the council, everyone should voice their opinion, in my, in my opinion, Alderman.
I'll make the motion, we pull the other one out and act on that, rather than, than going through 2023-451.
So we would need to withdraw this one. Do you want to withdraw this one first?
I would, I'd make a motion, we withdraw this and bring out the other one.
Second.
Budget Director Metzger, would that give you the money you needed to pay the bill?
Yes, it would.
Okay, just wanted to make sure we can pay our bill.
Okay.
So we have a motion on the floor to withdraw item number 2023, uh, 451, and we have a second, any discussion on the withdrawal of that motion first?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Okay, Alderman Williams.
Is this, is it okay with these guys?
Absolutely.
Okay.
You want to ask Tim weird questions, go ahead.
No, no, I just want, he came up, so I was thinking he was gonna respond to this, you know, this, uh.
Do you want to respond, Tim?
I wanted to make, make a point here that the 2023-322 is for three years of parts purchases. It runs from August 1st of this year to July 31st of 2026. So that's, that total that Larry, or off, Alderman Rockford mentioned, was five million, eight hundred fifty thousand. That's for three years of operation of purchasing the parts.
Right, right.
That's how we budgeted.
My question, my question was, uh, it says eight million, six hundred thousand on this ordinance right now, 451, 2023-451, the total RFP authorization. So my, my question is, is where the, where the difference was? And they're, they're telling me that it's off the old contract.
Right. Probably five-year contract.
Gotcha.
451 is to pay the bills that we've already incurred. That's for August and September.
Three hundred fifty thousand, yes, I understand.
Yeah, three hundred fifty thousand, we're now in October. So if you pass 451, we'll be right back and asking for another extension for October and November.
I think Purchasing Agent Lesko may have an answer for you, Alderman.
So the, so the three hundred and fifty thousand and the eight million, that contract was extended previously, so the original ordinance was for the five million, we extended it to the eight mil, or to seven-plus million, and now we're extending it to the eight, to the, to that eight million dollar threshold.
Yes, sir.
So then the new contract is for first-time passage to that five million dollar. So, so that's what, that's why the, the difference is.
Yeah.
Between the five and the eight, does that make sense?
Right, yes, sir.
Okay, so we're discussing the withdrawal of 451, Alderman Redpath, do you have a question on that?
Yes.
The withdrawal, okay?
Uh, so, uh, what's the, what makes up the difference that we're making, saving eighteen thousand a month? Is that because it's a three-year contract?
Okay, I think I need to correct that. I don't think, I think we're, I think that eighteen thousand number a month is wrong. I think it's eighteen hundred a month.
That's a big difference.
Okay.
There's a little difference.
Yeah.
It is if you're buying something. Eighteen hundred.
Big, okay. So correct me if I'm wrong.
I'm not done, I'm not done yet, I'll let you answer that, go ahead.
Because we're spending about, so the difference in savings from the old contract to the new contract is we're paying 7% on the old contract cost plus 6% on the new contract, okay? So it's a 1% savings. On average, we pay about, uh, a hundred and eighty thousand dollars a month in parts. So the 1% savings on that is eighteen hundred, correct? If I'm doing my math right, as opposed to eighteen thousand. So we're sa, I mean, it's a savings, but it's eighteen hundred a month as opposed to eighteen thousand.
I like the eighteen thousand above.
Yeah, I'm sorry, yeah, I, so do I, but I.
You perked everybody's ears up with that, Ralph, yeah. But, uh, Corporation Council, so, uh, my question is, is that, uh, uh, we do have an out clause on this contract if we need to?
That's correct, ninety days without cause.
Okay, that's all I needed to know.
Alderwoman Nottriano, do you have questions on the withdrawal of 451?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, I believe.
I'm just making sure we separate our.
Sure, sure. I mean, sort of, I, I think it's Jermaine, we'll see.
Okay.
Um, so I would just say, before we withdraw this now, um, I haven't looked at the other ordinance that's tabled in a while, so, um, I don't know that I'd be comfortable acting on it tonight.
Okay?
That's all I'm saying.
Alderman Hanauer, do you have a discussion on the withdrawal of 451?
Yeah, I guess the question I have is, uh, if, do we still have to, will this be retroactive to, or, or will we get, get the adjustment from the last two months or three months from when it was, when we've held it? Or does it, or do we still have to come back and, and pay whatever this amount is? Because I guess the difference of it is, is if we don't, if we have to pay this amount that's on the 451, right? And we're not getting the break, then there's no rea, we, we're gonna have to pass 451 and then come back with this later.
I will, I will have to speak with NAPA to be sure, but since the contract, the first RFP, 322, was not approved, those terms aren't in effect until that's approved.
We approve it.
So we would be paying the 7% until that's approved. So we would be paying the seven percent until that's approved.
So we don't want to withdraw this because we still have to pay the back bill.
I think that the budget director said this would allow us to pay the back bill. Is that right?
We would have, we would have sufficient.
Say it again, Ralph.
She says we have sufficient budgeting to pay the bill.
After the, the tabled one passes.
I can't hear you, Director.
Sorry. After the table one passes, we would have sufficient budget authority to pay it.
Okay.
So that works.
Cool. Okay, thank you.
Alderman Rockford, do you have discussion on the withdrawal of 451?
Well, mine, mine's more of a comment. I don't know if it's pertaining to this, but my, my whole thing about the NAPA stores is there's time and time again that we go to this NAPA store and we're waiting on parts. And I, and I know we talk about the, uh, the delivery and, and all this other, but this has been going on for years. This was going on way before pandemic and everything else. And this is, I just don't understand why we have to go to one, one part store to get parts when, when we have four or five different. And, and, and I know for a fact, because I did it when I was a supervisor with the city where I went to get parts and I wasn't able to because we're under contract. When we didn't have a part, we had to redline a truck because we couldn't get a wiring harness. And we could go, could have went to O'Reilly's. So when we sit here and we talk about this store being in our garage, um, I disagree with that. I think we should be able to go, go wherever we want to buy parts for our equipment. If our equipment's down, we need it. We don't have time to wait six, seven, eight months for brake rotors and brake pads and whatnot. So that's, that's why I'm not for NAPA and that's the comment. That's my comment.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Gregory, do you have anything on the withdrawal of 451?
Yeah, so it, 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 it sounds like to me that we need to pass this, Alderman Hanauer, so we can pay the past due bills. And then we pull out 422, correct, um, Director Metzger? Pull, pull that out for, for, for discussion. Cause it may take, it may take us, we might put it back in committee, you know, and we may not have, 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 uh, a, a agreement on, on what we want to do with this new contract. So I think we, we should go ahead and pass this, pay the bills, um, for what we have. And then let's discuss the new contract and the ins and outs of it and, and then go from there. Cause it, it, we can't pay it until we, we, um, pass the, um, ordinance that's in, in, in committee, which will take, you know, at least two weeks.
Alderman Hanauer.
Yeah, thank you. Um, I think after talking to other, other people over here, I, it might be more prudent to send this back to committee and, in case we do need, need to use it. But based on what the budget director has said, if we pass the other one, we have the, the, the authority. What is it? The two, two percent authority, budget authority or whatever it is, out of that contract to where we could pay these. We got up to a two percent adjustment.
Okay.
This may not be needed, but what I'd, what I'd rather, I think it might be better to do is to send this back to committee. We can always withdraw it if we don't need it. And then that way, if for some reason we need it, they don't have to, you don't have to go back around the whole process again. Does that make sense?
We have another Alderman signed up to speak, so are you speaking to that Alderman?
Well, I'm just trying to back him on this. I understand where we're going. We do, I think it's important that we pull 320, is it 322?
Yes.
Out to, um, give us a little bit of flexibility here. If we got an out clause and administration decides they want to make changes in this whole thing, we got, we got time to do that. We need to do this to pay the back bills so they can pay their bills and we are in a, a better stable position to, uh, move forward. What happens in the future happens in the future. We, we have the ability to get out of it if we have to. So I encourage us to, to follow your lead on this and we'll put it back in committee and pull 322 up and pass that.
I'll make a motion. We, I'll modify my motion.
So you need to make a motion to withdraw your withdrawal.
I'll make a motion.
We have a second to withdraw your withdrawal.
Change my motion to send this back to committee.
Do I need to have them vote on the withdrawal, the withdrawal first, to make it clean?
Yeah, we, because there was a motion to approve and a second, so that motion needs to be withdrawn. So we should approve.
I'll make a motion to withdraw that and to send this back to committee.
Any discussion on the withdrawal of the first? Okay, none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. All right, new motion.
I'll make a motion, we send this back to committee.
Motion to send item number 2023-451 back to committee. We have a first and a second. Any discussion on that? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. Okay.
And then, like, would this be the time that I asked to bring three, three 22?
Yes.
Okay.
Out for debate?
We have a motion. Can I get a second on that?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to bring 2023-322 back. Any discussion before I read it into the record? Okay. We're bringing back to the debate agenda. You want me to get them to vote on that?
Yeah.
So can I get a, an, oh, we're gonna do a roll call, or not a roll call, uh, can we vote in the system, Clerk Lesko? Can that be open? Cause we need a two-thirds vote, no?
I'll have to do roll call.
Roll call? Okay. Roll call vote so we can get a two-thirds to take it out.
Okay. Alderman Redpath.
Aye.
Alderman Gregory.
Aye.
Alderman Williams.
Aye.
Alderman Rockford.
Aye.
Alderwoman Purchase.
Aye.
Alderwoman Notarino.
Aye.
Alderman Carlson.
Aye.
Alderman Donlin.
Aye.
Alderman Hanauer.
Aye.
Nine ayes and no nays, Mayor.
Okay. So back to the debate agenda, we are going to discuss item number 2023-322. The item on the agenda is an ordinance authorizing acceptance of RFP VM 24-04 with motor parts and equipment corporation, DBA NAPA Auto Parts for a turnkey parts store operation for an amount not to exceed five million 850,000 dollars from August 1st, 2023 through July 31st, 2026 for the Office of Budget and Management. The chair will entertain a motion to whatever you want to do.
Second to approve.
We have a motion for passage and we have a second. Any discussion on this item now? No one has signed up to speak? Okay, then the voting will now be open. All those in favor, please vote aye. All those opposed, please vote nay. And the motion passes with nine voting yes, none voting no. The next item on the agenda is item number 2023-478. An ordinance to increase the number of Class D liquor licenses by one for Sky Lounge LLC, DBA Sky Lounge, located at 320, 3,254 West Isles Avenue for emergency passage. The chair will entertain a motion to place agenda number 2023-478 on emergency passage.
So move.
Have a motion. Can I get a second? Any discussion on this? Alderman Redpath.
Explain the Class D for me again, Corporation Council.
Our class.
You can swallow. Go ahead.
Uh, Class D license is.
That's what they have now.
Are you looking for your Chris Tylen papers over there?
It's a restaurant license with a 1:00 AM closure.
What are they doing now?
I think it's the same. It got sold.
Oh, we're just transferring a.
We're just, yeah.
Okay, all right, that's good. Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Alderman Hanauer.
Put it in as a, uh, put, as a co-sponsor, please.
Okay, Clerk Lesko, um, Alderman Hanauer would like to be added as a co-sponsor, please.
Will do.
Thank you. Uh, is that it, Alderman Hanauer?
Yes.
Alderman Williams.
Yeah, so is there, is there a flaw in our, our process? And I ask that because I have one on North Dirksen where the, you know, they got a license now. And I, and I talked to the guy, you know, in your office, everything's fine, but, but, but they're forced to have a waiting period. But the way out of it is that we have to do all of them like this on emergency passes so they don't have to wait? He's not changing anything, was changing hands, I think, but they currently have a liquor license. But, but I got a caller to ask me to put this on emergency passes. So I thought while we're discussing this, I'd see if, if that's the proper road.
Well, the reason these get put on emergency passage is if there's a transfer that, if, if there's a, a short period between change of ownership, so if there's a sale and they're set to close in less than a month, um, before they decide to apply to us, then there would be a lapse in the license if it took us our two, our typical two reading cycle. So, so the reason we put these on emergency passage is so the business doesn't have to close down for a week while they wait, or, you know, end liquor sales for a week, especially when the, the business is being so, sold as a whole and there's really no, um, appearance to the public as if there's a change.
Right, right. And that's this situation. So I mean, I understand that. So I guess, uh, we may want to take a look at, at that process and maybe, unless we have a bunch of emergency passages. I don't know. I haven't been on the council long enough to know how often this situation comes up. Cause all it is, is a, a turnover, you know, a switching of ownership, but nothing else is changing. But my guy doesn't want to not sell liquor until the next cycle, so he's asking me to do something similar to this, which I don't want to increase a bunch of emergency passages. So that's why I'm asking, can we fix this some kind of way to where we don't have to do that?
Well.
The liquor commission fix it or something? I don't know.
We can't continue a license to a new owner. So we, we have to, we have to issue a new license to each new owner. And so the only way I could see to not put it on emergency passage would, would be to create, to amend our two readings ordinance to create a special exception for.
I, I think this is the easier way. We'll just.
Yeah, I, I agree. I, I agree. We're, we're just trying to follow state, state statute to do it with our two readings ordinance.
I appreciate it. I just thought it would be a quicker way, so I'll have one next time around. Thank you.
Any other discussion on 2023-478? Okay. The voting will now be open. All those in favor, please vote yes. All those opposed, please vote no.
I pressed it, sorry. I'm, I'm good.
And the motion passes with 10 voting yes, none voting no. Is there any unfinished business to bring before the city council at this time? No one? Uh, we're on to new business and before we open it up to the council members, I would like to ask Chief Keaney to come up for new business. Look at the shock on his face. This is great. Every now and then I get to pull something fun out. Uh, will you just tell everybody what's going on tomorrow with the testing, please?
Tomorrow?
Is it Wednesday, the 4th? Is that right? 1:20 PM?
Oh, okay.
Cell phone testing.
Okay, yes, sorry.
Okay.
I was just talking about.
Coming from, it would be more impactful coming from you than me.
Yes, sure, sure. So the, uh, the national emergency, um, testing that goes to your cell phone anytime there's an amber alert or a tornado, uh, 1:20 tomorrow afternoon, they're going to be testing that system. So don't be alarmed. If your phone goes off at 1:20, it's a national test of that system. So if for some reason there's storms that impact in a widespread area, they won't test that area. But our storms aren't supposed to be, and ours is going to be heavy rain on Thursday, I believe, so we should be good. So look for that tomorrow. So.
Thank you.
All right, thanks.
Any additional new business to come before the city council?
I know, that's what I think.
All right. Alderwoman Purchase, nothing?
Not today.
All right. I'm gonna give you a hug when we get done. So now we're on, on to citizens to address the council. Before we go to executive session, we will have executive session. And Alice Ramey has signed up to speak to the council. You got a standing ovation. Mr. Johnson, I see you're in the back. Did you need to? Are there any other citizens here that wish to address the council?
That's hilarious.
Alderwoman Purchase is a trend setter tonight. So we would like to have a motion to enter executive session pursuant to.
Second.
Five ILCS 120-2 of the Open Meetings Act, Section C1, Personal Matters, Personnel Matters, and Section C8, School Building Safety and Security Procedures. We have a first and a second. All those in favor to go into executive session? Any opposed? Okay, we're gonna convene to executive session.
I, I pulled the wrong ordinance. No, I, I was having, it, it's always.
Confidential.
Yeah, yeah.
Man, even the media is gone.
The chair will now entertain a motion to adjourn the executive session and reconvene the regular meeting of the city council. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion carries. Uh, the chair will now entertain a motion to adjourn the regular city council meeting.
So move.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
All right, motion is approved. We, meeting has been adjourned. Can't believe that.